Good evening, I'd like to call the order. A city council meeting, the City of Satellite Beach, November 5th, 2014, approximately 7:00 PM, and this is a regular meeting. Please join Councilman Breimer for a moment of silence and the pledge.
Gentlemen, a moment of silence, please. And join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, it's Citizens' Comments, and this is for non-Agenda items. So the floor is open for non-Agenda items. Here are none, bring it back to council. Moving on to Agenda Item 4, City Council Comments, and with permission from council, I'd like to start this. First, I'd like to thank the staff, the Women's Club, all the employees that put out an incredible amount of effort for Founder's Day. Kerry has done Founder's Day for close to 40 years, and it's amazing, the turnout this year was spectacular. At 8:30 in the morning, the parking lot was full at the Schecter Center. And it's a tribute to the work that they do, and it was a great parade, it was a lot of fun, and to the staff for the hard work, thank you very, very much for what you do. Comments from council, who would like to start?
There is no TPO meeting scheduled for November, so there will be no South Beaches Coalition meeting.
I attended on the 19th, the Yacht Club and Volkswagen Club had their day up at the Schecter Center, and I'll tell you, if you didn't go, you missed a lot of great cars, because there were a lot of Volkswagens there, and there were a lot of people that came to enjoy it. And I know Phil Klein, who works in our Public Works Department, was instrumental in putting that together, so there's another, you know, staff member who, you know, does things in our community besides work in our city. I also attended the Satellite Beach Women's Club Political Forum on the 20th, and I also was part of Founder's Day, and I want to just echo Frank's comments, that, you know, staff does a wonderful job, and it's a lot of the departments, it's the Police Department, the Fire Department, Public Works, I mean, everyone is involved in making Founder's Day the success that it is, and the Women's Club is basically the catalyst that makes it happen, so kudos to all of them involved, and it was a great day. There were a lot of people on the streets as the parade was going down, and it was probably the most well-attended event in a long time. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Just a couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First of all, you know, again, congratulations to the city staff and to Lorraine for the Beachcaster. I've gotten a number of comments about that document, and it's really, really well-done, just how it was laid out and how everything made sense, so I just wanted to thank everyone for doing that, that really came out well. I too, and I won't repeat myself, attended Founder's Day, it was very well-done, one of the best turnouts we've had, and we actually, I think we all ran out of candy, didn't we?
Yes.
Yeah, which never happens, but we were all struggling around looking for candy, but great job to the city and the staff as well on that. Last thing I have is, for the past several months, I've been working with the Brevard Commission on Aging on a fitness and wellness initiative. We've been trying to work that through a number of itinerations, and just got through reading an email from Kerry, we're actually going to be able to have a pilot project in either February or March, and then another one in April, on the whole fitness-wellness concept, to see what we can do to provide our citizens with a little bit more information on wellness, fitness, general health, and that sort of thing. There'll be presentations up at, probably up at the Schecter Center, they'll be short, but we're just going to start them here and see how they go, and if that works, maybe present some with the Department of Health. So I just want to thank Kerry for moving along that project. I mean, we've got one of the best and most proactive rec departments in the area. I've seen, I mean, I've seen a lot of rec departments in my travels with the communities for a lifetime, and this one's really top-notch, and just being able to do this again will set us well with our communities for a lifetime, and just the whole initiative of taking people, care of people 65 and older on wellness and that sort of thing. So again, thank you, but that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Yep, several weekends ago, I attended another Seahawk's Day at the new library field, spoke with several board members, and they expressed their appreciation for expanding the field, and the family members love it. It's now an opportunity to go back and stay there all day and watch all the teams instead of just attending at the high school and watching your child play and then moving on. So it was a great event, spent a half a day there and really enjoyed it. I also attended the Founder's Day Parade, it was a lot of fun, a lot of people didn't recognize me, I got a lot of comments afterwards, you know, "Was that you?", and I'm like, "Yep, that was me", and I'm also proud of the staff for, again, pulling off a great event, and also proud of my dog, who walked in the parade with me and was very well-behaved. Also want to congratulate Kurt Smith on his win, as our new district commissioner, I attended his victory party, and Bill Posey's victory party last night, and it was well-attended, and special appreciation to my husband, who and I, who hosted a meet and greet for him back in July, and happy that he's now going to be our new district commissioner. That's it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll just add one thing, I also attended Founder's Day and was in the parade, and I just want Mark to know that we do have some dog biscuits left over.
Thank you. Okay, here are no further comments from council, city managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. I did want to remind everyone that the Ocean Reef Beach Festival is December 6th, from 10 till 5 at Pelican Beach Park. At this wonderful event, that is growing bigger and bigger every year, we will also have, the city will have a booth there for the first time, and we'll be promoting our survey, community survey, for the Creating a Resonant Community Project. The items in that survey came out of the community meeting that we held, and we're very excited to have a booth at that event. So please come out and support us and take the survey. You'll be getting a notice about the survey delivered to your home, so that's one way of taking the survey, but another, probably more fun way, would be to come out to the beach festival and enjoy the festival at the same time. I did want to say that we are in discussions with waste management regarding a pilot project, and this came at the request of Councilman Breimer, who had some discussions with the waste management staff, and heard about the possibility of a pilot project for composting. Waste Management has two composting facilities, and composts waste from commercial customers throughout South Florida currently, and they're looking to expand that operation into a residential community, and they would like to use our community as a pilot for that. So when we get more information on that, we'll bring that to you. They thought that our community was a good fit, because we already have a yard waste container, as well as a trash container and recycling container, and that the composting could be combined with the yard waste. So they're looking into that, this would fit well into, I think, some of the goals of our community in terms of sustainability and things like that, so when we get that information, we'll put it on your agenda for your approval, okay? The city will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday November 26th and 27th, most people know that, but I just want to make sure that everyone knows that. And then, like Councilman Breimer, I have received numerous compliments from residents, some people have, did actually take the time to call us at City Hall to tell us how they enjoyed the special edition Beachcaster, and that they appreciated us taking the time to send that out and give them that information. And then, as always, I did receive thank you letters from our residents regarding our staff, we received three. And I did want to, we will, I will be emailing you a report on the precinct information, so you can see how our precincts fared in terms of how we voted in Satellite Beach. We get that information, and I thought it would be good for us to compile it this time and send it out to you, so you can see how Satellite Beach voted. Our audio improvements for the council chambers will be done next Thursday, barring any complications, so we apologize for the length of time it's taken, but we will get it done hopefully by the next council meeting. I did want to receive some direction from you on the marijuana ordinance, obviously it did not, the initiative, the ballot initiative didn't pass, or the constitutional amendment initiative didn't pass, so I was wondering if you all wanted to continue on with that ordinance, or did you want to postpone that until, if it comes back, you want to go ahead and postpone that?
Postpone.
Okay, all right, we just wanted to get your information. And then I, in your packet, I also included some information on waste management's green facts, I think just a lot of their, that company's actions in terms of our environment, I think a lot of people don't know, and, you know, some of the neat things that waste management does for our environment, that I thought would be interesting to you, and that's it.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, hold on, please. Questions for the city manager on the report?
Regarding waste management, fact or fiction, was there a hole in a truck in recyclables were kind of landing in our streets, and was that an issue or not?
I haven't received any complaints, so that needs you.
Okay. From what I'm hearing, there's an issue with one of the trucks, and there's a hole in it, and the recyclables are falling into the street, so.
Do you know who's complaining about that?
I'll get that to you. And then, just an update, has the striping plan on the chopping court, has that been presented to the principal at Satellite High?
Yeah, we actually sent a letter to all property owners adjacent to that roadway, so we're waiting for their comments, or we gave them a comment period.
Okay.
And after that comment period is over, we'll get started on that striping project.
That's it.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just noticed in their waste management green facts, said that they recycle or reuse enough material in one year to fill the U.S. Capitol Building more than six times, and all I can say with that is, finally they find a good use for that building.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for the city manager? Here are none, I'm going to step down to the podium here and move on to the next two
Tessin, thank you. Before I call this wonderful lady up here, I'm not going to read from her plaque, because first, I don't like reading from plaques, and I think she deserves more than that. Our city, as many of you know, really started with people who volunteered and gave their time and effort to make Satellite Beach a better place, and we're honoring a lady today who gave us 20 years of her service on a board that you're not always popular when you're on the Board of Adjustment. She did it professionally, and I've got a lot of emails from members who served on the board, and Leslie, would you like to come up here, please? I'd like you to read the email that you sent me. Thank you.
And I apologize for reading, but I didn't know I was going to be reading this, but this is for Christine Hendricks. She's been a mentor and a role model for me for many years. When I first joined the Board of Adjustment, I'm on the Board of Adjustment now, I had a lot to learn, I didn't really know much about it, so I listened to and observed Christine and learned so much, and not just about the role of the board and the rules and how they worked, but also about the community and the reasons for the rules and the public policy underlying the rules. She has a great sense of fairness, she always treated people with dignity and respect and with grace. I don't think she really knew how much she taught me and how much I respect her, she did that in a silent way. I'm so grateful to share my Board of Adjustment experience with Christine, and we will miss her valuable contributions to the board and to the city, and thanks so much, Christine, for your service.
On behalf of the city, the citizens, and the council and staff, want to present you this, and thank you very much for 20 years of incredible service to our city. And I know you told me we didn't really need to do it, but we absolutely did, and thank you very, very much.
So much.
Appreciate it. Thank you. We're going to move on to Agenda Item 7, which is a presentation of a proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2014, as Veterans' Day and a National Day of Service and Remembrance. And I've always asked members of council who have particular feelings towards any of these particular resolutions and or proclamations, excuse me, and Councilwoman Gott will read this for us, and please, Captain Richard Parks from the VFW, would you please step up?
And I would like to ask all of the military veterans to stand while I read this proclamation. This is an official proclamation of the City of Satellite Beach, Florida, whereas November 11th is dedicated to the extraordinary Americans who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces. On this day, we come together to pay tribute to America's sons and daughters for their service and sacrifice. And whereas our veterans have preserved our way of life with unwavering patriotism and quiet courage, they have charged into harm's way, sometimes making the ultimate sacrifice to protect the freedoms that have blessed America. And whereas, long after leaving the uniform behind, many Americans continue to serve our country in communities from coast to coast as public servants and mentors, parents and community leaders, they have added proud chapters to the history of America. And whereas our actions must strengthen the bond between our nation and her warriors who protected our freedom in years past and who protect it today, and whereas with respect and recognition of the contributions our servicemen and women have made to the cause of peace and freedom around the world, we must fulfill our sacred trust to care for our veterans. And whereas Congress has approved and requests that we observe November 11th as Veterans' Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. Now therefore I, Frank P. Cutino, Mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2014, as Veterans' Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. I encourage our community to join together to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through ceremonies and prayers, and to pay tribute to the many heroes who protect and defend our great nation. In witness whereof, in witness whereof, I hereby sign this proclamation and cause the seal of the City of Satellite Beach to be affixed this 5th day of November, 2014. And it's signed Frank P. Cutino, Mayor. I think somebody's trying to play tax.
Sir, thank you very, very much, on behalf of the city, we appreciate it, everybody.
I appreciate it, and I accept this point of the VFW, the retirement officer, but on the 11th day of this month, this is the 11th month, they have at 11 o'clock in the morning, the VFW on Park and A1A will be having a flag racing ceremony at exactly 11 o'clock, and Mayor, hold on, everybody in this room, you're all invited for that patriotic thing, and please bring kids, because we really like to do for the youth also. Thank you very, very much, and thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Vice Mayor Gott. Moving on to, at this time, we're going to move Agenda Item 11 up to this spot, and Agenda Item 11 is discussed, take action on Resolution Number 953. Jim?
Resolution Number 953, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, opposing seismic airgun testing in the Atlantic Ocean providing an effective date. So reading a Resolution Number 953.
Thank you very much.
Move to adopt Resolution 953.
Second. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro, to adopt Resolution 953. Council comments? Here are none, at this time, oh.
It's a very well-written resolution, and the facts in here are really rather startling, and it's just hard to see how you could not support this resolution.
And everyone's desk is the corrected version of it? Okay, thank you. Any further comments from council, from staff? At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item.
Good evening. My name is Cory Westbrook, and I live in Vero Beach, Florida. Thank you for allowing me to testify in support of this resolution, and thank you for introducing it. I previously worked as the Federal Policy Director for Oceana, and we have done extensive research into the impacts of our ocean wildlife due to seismic airgun testing and then the eventual oil and gas drilling that it brings. So the Obama administration is allowing oil companies to begin oil and gas exploration in the Atlantic Coast, from Delaware to the Brevard Indian River County line, that's the blast zone. As of now, the blast zone extends as far south, I'm from Indian River County, but we will be impacted as well if they start doing seismic airgun testing. The blasts from the sonic cannons carry over great distances, even thousands of miles. The noise pollution created by the cannons will send extremely loud sound waves through the ocean every 10 seconds, 24 hours a day, for weeks and weeks on end, as they search for oil and gas deposits. The airguns use compressed air to generate powerful pulses of sound, which are 100,000 times more intense than a jet engine. The noise pollution will harm marine mammals, sea turtles and fisheries. These are facts that no one disputes. Seismic airgun testing currently being proposed will injure 138,000 whales and dolphins and disturb millions more, and that is according to NOAA government fishery statistics, not just Oceana. Seismic airgun testing and the oil and gasoline that will eventually follow will harm crucial industries in Florida, such as fisheries, aquaculture, seafood markets, and of course, tourism. So even if a person does not care about seismic testing impacts on our beloved wildlife like whales and dolphins, or does not concern that Brevard County is home to 90% of nesting loggerhead sea turtles, and maybe aren't even concerned that some of our delicious local catch would move away as a result of the noise, people should be concerned about Florida's economy. A primary reason we do not pay estate income taxes is because tourism generates enormous revenue for our state and provides hundreds of thousands of jobs. The only people that will profit are the oil and gas companies, so we must force together to stop seismic airgun testing now, and passing this resolution will be a great step forward. And quickly, in regard to timing, every administration creates a five-year plan to deal with oil and gas drilling, it's OCS, Outer Continental Shelf. So currently, okay, the Bush administration stopped the moratorium in the Atlantic Ocean, which had been for years and decades, in the 2006-2011 five-year plan. So right now, we are in the President Obama's 2012-2017 five-year plan, in which he said, "Go ahead and find the oil and gas off of our beaches", and this is where, so what we've been doing, all the conservation organizations, states, through litigation, through getting communities active, is try to slow down the process. So as of now, they're not going to start seismic airgun testing until 2015, possibly 2016. So ideally, we'll slow it down till 2017, then it'll never start. But the other thing that's happening with timing is, right now, the Obama administration is preparing the next five-year plan, so that will be 2017 through 2022. If we can keep Florida's beaches, especially Brevard, out of that plan, then we won't have to keep fighting it locally through litigation, and that would be the ideal situation. So your passing this resolution now doesn't just inform the Obama administration that we do not want seismic airgun testing off our beaches in this plan, but hopefully sets a stage to get rid of it for long-term. One last thing, Surprider Foundation, National, Local and the Sebastian Inlet Chapter, the Marine Resources Council, Southeastern Fisheries Association, Anglers for Conservation and Florida Sierra Club are all supportive of these resolutions, and almost all of them have either a Brevard chapter or based in Brevard. And then, just for the big picture, we had 23 resolutions now passed from Delaware down, the goal is to get every single small town on the coast to pass resolutions or write letters. In Florida, we have Cocoa Beach, St. Augustine, Cape Canaveral, St. Petersburg and Melbourne Beach have all passed similar resolutions. And then, we have 23 altogether, but the goal is to get like 100%, and then just keep slowing it down. So I have a ton more information about this, if you have any other questions, but thank you so much for letting me testify and support, and I hope that you will all vote for it.
Thank you very much. Floor is still open for public comment.
Richard Harbano, 619 North Robert Way. I don't really have any statement about this, I just have two questions. What are we going to do with this? Who are we going to send it to?
We're going to pass the resolution, well, the resolution's here to be voted on. If it passes, it shows support for not using the air guns.
Okay. Because it doesn't seem like it has any teeth in it to make anybody do anything, just sort of seems like, you know, a bunch of us are sitting here saying, "Yeah, we don't like it", but it doesn't go any farther than that.
The resolution says it will go to the president.
Okay. I didn't see that, but thanks.
Further com, public comments?
All right, Dan Genobazy, 135 Park Avenue. I'm with this gentleman here, is this just a statement that we are pronouncing, that we oppose this effort? And if it is, is there a distance from the Satellite Beach shoreline that this, you know, talks to? Or can they say, "Yeah, sure, we won't do it two miles out from Satellite Beach", and doesn't make a difference? The other thing is, we already know China's getting ready to probably do their own drilling, angle drilling for Cuba, so, I mean, I'm just not sure what this says and how it actually says it. Is there a specific distance from Satellite Beach? And if there isn't, or if there is, what happens? This somebody said the seismic boom can travel thousands of miles. Just food for thought.
Thank you. Further comment on this agenda item? Here are no further comments, bring it back for council, further council comments?
Yeah, I think that the, you know, the purpose of this resolution, and Cory said, indicated that it's going to all of the towns along the East Coast, and it's to get a sense of what the people want, and the beginning of popular response to the proposal to be doing this testing. And so, you know, with this resolution, we join that group of municipalities that does not want this program to start.
And just to kind of follow up on Lorraine's comments, a lot of times when we do this, it's just kind of a concept that we want to bring forward, that in totality, we're kind of against this, it just kind of sends a message out there that we support not doing this. So in regards to your answer, how far out it goes, I don't think we know how far out it goes, it's just in general, we just don't want to see that done, because of what it may do to the fish and wildlife in that particular area. So it just kind of sets a statement, and she had mentioned that, you know, in lieu of litigation, you always try to make a statement, so this is kind of a statement saying that we don't want to support this, so.
Well, I was just going to say, really, it's not within our purview to figure out how far out it is or make those kind of judgment calls, all we're doing is basically stating the fact that we recognize the impacts that this could have, not only on our community, but on other communities along the East Coast of Florida and the East Coast of the United States. I know from being a diver in the past that noise travels entirely different underwater than it does above water, and I also know that working in the oil and gas industry back in the '70s, I know how they do this stuff on land, and they basically set phones down across a long path, and they set off explosions along those phones that are tapped in to a truck with a computer, and that's how they pick up the seismic activity of what's underground. And this is basically doing the same thing, only it's happening in water, and it's a different type of explosion. But we're basically saying that we're opposed to the things that could happen along the coast, and I don't know if some of you lived here during the '80s and the late '70s, but at the beach accesses along our beaches here, people left beach accesses along our beaches here, people left cans of WD-40 because of all the tar and all the oil that was coming in from ships discharging stuff. That doesn't happen anymore. But that same scenario would play out along our beaches when they start doing this stuff with oil offshore. That stuff goes somewhere, and it comes on the beaches. And that's not what we want on our beaches.
Thank you. Any further comments from counsel? Hearing none, I have a motion, a second on the floor. Lenore?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montener?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Five, nothing. Thank you. Thank you very much. At this time, moving on to Agenda Number Eight, and I'd like to open up a public hearing to discuss take action on Ordinance Number 1098. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1098, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending Section 30-415.5 Sub B, Sub 2, Sub B, Satellite Beach City Code by adding clubhouses to accessory structures and uses an RM4 multi-family zoning district and amending subsection C4 of that section by amending maximum structure length in RM4 multi-family zoning district, providing severability, providing an effective date. It's a second reading of Ordinance Number 1098.
Move to adopt Ordinance 1098 on second reading.
Second. And a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montener, to adopt the Ordinance Number 1098 on second read. Further counsel comments?
I just want to say that, you know, this has already been discussed, and we've already had one reading on this. And I just want to thank Mr. Codsey for bringing this to us. I also want to thank him for his past contribution of the Gemini property, for the agreement that we have on this property. And I think this benefits our city and the fact that we have a good development plan for this property. We also have a three-acre park on the ocean that was part of this project, and I think this is a great step to start moving forward on developing this property. Thank you.
Further counsel comments? Hearing none, move, opened up for citizens' comments on this agenda item. Hearing none, back to counsel. Any further comments from counsel? Hearing none, Lenore?
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montener?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tina?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Now moving on to Agenda Item Nine, discuss take action on amendment to development agreement between Ocean Beach Club LLC and the City of Satellite Beach. Courtney?
Thank you, Mayor. This development agreement is, will be consistent with the ordinance you just passed, which basically provides an option instead of having, well, an option of also being able to do two buildings with a length of 250 feet per building, in addition to the option of having three buildings with a length of 200 feet per building. So it gives the developer a little bit more flexibility in what they can build.
Question, Courtney? This amendment to the agreement does not affect the two beach accesses in this agreement on either side of that property, does it?
No, the, all of the stipulations in the original developer's agreement remain in the developer's agreement.
Okay. So we will have both of those accesses?
That's correct.
Thank you. Further counsel comments? At this time, open up for public comment on Agenda Item Nine. Hearing none, bring it back to counsel. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Montener, second by Councilman Brymer. Any further discussion from counsel? Hearing none, Lenore?
Vice Mayor McGinn? Yes.
Vice Mayor Gott?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Montener?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tina?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Ten, discuss take action on Ordinance Number 1099. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1099, in ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending appropriations of funds for the fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Ordinance Number 1077. Said ordinance was previously amended by Ordinance Number 1091, providing an effective date. It's the first reading of Ordinance Number 1099.
Move to adopt Ordinance 1099 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montener. At this time, Assistant City Manager has a presentation he'd like to make.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Before you tonight, you have an ordinance, 1099. As the mayor stated, that is basically your year-end budget amendment for fiscal year 1314. We're currently in the new fiscal year. Our fiscal years start October 1st and end September 30th of each year. So this is the last year that ended September 30th. The purpose of the budget amendment, as you'll see on the overhead, is there's basically been a change in projected revenues and expenses. It's typical in budgets, that's what they're for. They change, the revenues increase, expenditures increase, vice versa. The city charter basically says that approved budget expenditures at the department level cannot exceed actual expenses at year-end, so therefore, we have to adjust our budget accordingly. And then also, Florida Statute 166-241 allows governing body to amend the budget of each municipality at any time within a fiscal year, or within 60 days following the end of the fiscal year. November 30th will be within the 60 days, so this will be the first reading of this ordinance. The budget amendment must be adopted in the same manner as the budget was adopted, so we're adopting the year-end budget amendment by ordinance. Next slide. The, just to give you an overview of the general fund revenues, sort of, this is where we're at, you know, the year's over with, we've got everything in the accounting system, so we just basically pull the numbers from there, and then we develop the, look at the budget numbers versus what, you know, where we were actually at. So this gives you a good idea of what you'll see during the audit, which is be due in March of this year. The revenues basically at year-end increased from $9,666,000 to $9,344,000. The large portion, there was really no major change. The only thing we did do at mid-year was we took out the revenues we received from the state of Florida for the 175, 185 monies. That's basically to help offset the pensions costs for the cities and municipalities. And basically, we removed that revenue at mid-year just to get our budget correct because we had some issue with that at previous years. And then basically, at year-end, we come back and add the actual amount we received. So we actually received 278...
238.
I'm sorry. $238,000 at year-end from the state for the premium, for the insurance premium tax. And I said before, it's a pass-through from the state of Florida, and we send that check directly to the police and fire pension to the league of cities. It's not even written to the City of Satellite Beach. By year-end, we have to add that back in the budget. So there's really not a lot of changes. We did project our revenue projections, you know, fairly conservative, but within line, we were about over budget. We received about $40,000 to $50,000 more in revenues than we had budgeted at mid-year. So that's fairly close for a $10 million budget. The general fund revenues, to give you an overview, again, I'm just going to go over the, you'll see it in your packet in the budget amendment, any revenues that exceeded $15,000 plus to the good or to the minus. Our Avalorm revenues came in about $29,000 short than we budgeted. We collect about $5 million, so, you know, that's not a big percentage to be off. You can never be 100% accurate with that. So we're happy with that projection. Next year, it may be $10,000 to the good, or, you know, but that's a close enough number. Communication services tax, this is a line item that we've seen kind of decrease over the past several years. It's basically, we receive that tax for users of cellphones and anything to do with communication. We've seen a lot of the prepaid phones come out, and those, you don't have to pay communication services tax with those. So we've seen sort of a decrease in revenues, so that line item, we experienced about $36,000 less. Building permits are up. We budgeted, I think that's been, in the mid-year, we increased it, and then at year-end, we increased it. So John's got a lot going on in his building department there, so that was about $19,000 more than we budgeted mid-year. The electricity franchise fees, this is a fairly large number. We budgeted mid-year, kind of based off of, you know, you never know, it's based off your electricity bill, so if you're, if it's a hotter summer or colder winter, you know, you're going to have more of that. So we projected those fairly low, knowing they would come a little higher. So we actually experienced $57,000 more there. And then a half cent sales tax, I think people are spending a little bit more money. The economy's getting a little better, so that was an increase of about $23,000 than what was budgeted. So overall, it comes out to be about $40,000 to $50,000 more than we projected, which is a good thing on the revenue side. The general fund expenditures, I'll just kind of go over each of the departments that you have. Kind of, you can just look at the difference line item there on the far right-hand side. This is the budget versus actual, where we actually came at at year-end. Legislative, which is the city council's little, small budget there, but they, you came in under budget within your department. The city's clerk's office was within budget, you know, $1,800, not a very big amount. The support services was over about $17,000. I went back and looked at that. The large, the amount we did on IT audit, and we've done some other things with Artemis as far as helping us set up some of the servers and some of the, from the IT side, so that represents the majority of that $17,000. The general governmental services account was over about $23,000. We spent a little more on attorney's fees within that account number, and then there were some other expenses in there as well. The police department, the two asterisks there are because, you know, when you had the 175, 185 monies at year-end, basically, if we have to include those as expenses too in the budget, even though it's a pass-through, so we subtracted out what those amounts were to get then an actual picture of whether or not they were within the budget. Police department was within the budget, a little under. Fire department was quite a bit under this year. The building and zoning department was under budget. Public Works Department was the one that was, you know, quite a bit under as well. They did have an open position come open mid-year, and we just simply didn't fill it. That position's still unfilled at this point, and we'll talk about that a little later. The Recreation Department is under budget, and the inter-fund transfers, the transfer, it's an expense because it's a transfer from the general fund to the CRA, and that's what the city pays their portion to the CRA for the tax increment. Next slide. I'll go over sort of the other smaller funds. The Community Services Fund, that's the Sampson's Island, that's the Recycling Trust Fund, some of your smaller funds that we have set up. There was really no material changes from budget numbers at year-end. The Stormwater Utility Fund, as we spoke about at last meeting, we all knew at the beginning of this year that the, after we received our audit for, what was 1112, or 1213, excuse me, we noticed that, basically, that the fund balance in the Stormwater Fund was basically $1,000 at year-end. So starting this year, we set some projects on the list at the beginning of the year, Lower Lane Project, we were running full blast on that with the engineering. Then we came to realize, basically, the debt service in that fund barely covered the revenues, so there was no money to do additional projects. So the council took action on that before it got out of control, and so that fund at year-end, we halted the Lower Lane Project, and we put it, just put everything at a halt. The city councils addressed that in next year's budget with the stormwater increase that came out in the Beach Caster. So that won't be a problem with that moving forward, but at the end of 1314, we projected there to be approximately about a $15,000, $50,000 deficit in the Stormwater Fund. And there's a solution to that moving forward. The Law Enforcement Trust Fund, there's been no material changes from the budget there. The Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, the one change that we did do, and we've discussed this, was we, at mid-year, was we were going to propose, we originally paid for the Pelican Beach new playground equipment out of the capital assets fund, although it was, the whole project was constructed with the CRA money, so we, it was basically a replacement of the existing playground structure that had deteriorated. So we've transferred that project to the Community Redevelopment Agency Trust Fund to be paid for out of that fund. That had a surplus fund balance at year-end. And we also returned the excess revenues of $33,724 that was left over back to the taxing authorities, so that'll be split up according to how much of that $33,000. The larger portion will come back to the city, and the county's portion of that 33 will go back to the county. After we receive our audit, we'll disperse that money out of the CRA. And that's in accordance with the Community Redevelopment Agency Plan Amendment that was adopted here recently. The capital assets funds, basically, you'll see a large jump there as far as revenues and expenses. It's sort of an offset. We have to account for the capital lease, the RMS system this year, because it was completed, so you'll see the full cost of that in there. And then you'll see also the cost of the fire truck, but it's offset with the revenue, and it's offset with the expense. So really, it's sort of a wash. It's basically really for accounting purposes. Sort of an overview here, the budget for 1314, the proposed funding the reserve at the beginning of the year at $200,000. As you know, that a lot of that was part of the plan originally, and it's spelled out in the plan with the county and the city. The actual budgeted numbers, where we think we'll end up more at year-end, will be approximately $336,000, where we're going to be able to fund the reserve. So that's approximately $136,000 more than budgeted. So you can basically say the city overall and the general fund came in $136,000 under budget, and we're going to fund the reserve $200,000 as budgeted. So that is a really positive step forward for the city. We did the same thing last year. I'll show you a slide here in a second that can see the city's progress in building their This is basically what you'll see in your budget document every year, so I kind of put it back up there, and I kind of, in the estimated 1314, I changed those numbers because of the last slide just showed, showed you all that we're going to increase the fund balance even more than we anticipated, even more than we had budgeted. So if you'll look at, basically, you know, go right to the bottom number, the one you really want to look at here is the total unrestricted. As you guys recall, the auditor every year has made a comment about the financial condition of the city, and it's based on this number. How much do you have in the unrestricted accounts, your fund balance, that you're able to use in case of emergency? We had $628,000 in 1213. If I put another column here, you would have that's the $30,000, the $60,000 we talked about. That's when the city was in a serious state of financial emergency, or close to being there. But you can see, we decreased it $600,000 there, and it's going to go up another like $330,000 in 1314. And then in 1450, we projected it'd be close to $1,000,001. So that was initially, I believe, a 10 or 12, I think it was a 10-year plan to get our reserves back to where they need to be to get that comment out of our audit. I think, fairly confident that in 1516, within five years, we'll probably be at that number. So pretty good turnaround as far as the city's finances and the city's reserves. To give you an overview, basically, just said it again, we're under budget by $136,000. The general fund balance will be increased by approximately $336,000. The city council must determine how to address the stormwater deficit moving forward. The city doesn't necessarily have to do that this year, but we will have to put, if we don't find a way to do it, we'll have to make a comment to the auditors of how we look to address that deficit moving forward. The city councils, basically, conservative budgeting practices continue to demonstrate positive financial results for the city. You guys aren't over projecting revenues and spending more than you bring in, so that's a positive thing. And continuous, we'll continue to monitor the finances and present that information to not only the council, but the residents in kind of a watered-down manner, so everybody has an understanding of what's taking place. The things that we'll need to address, and we'll hopefully be able to address some of that this evening, the stormwater fund deficit, the $50,000. It's basically a fund, there's money in the bank, but there's just a fund that needs to be addressed. And then we did have unfunded vacancy in public works that we did, as I said before, we held it open in 1314, and moving forward in 1415, the position is there but unfunded. What we propose, and I don't know if Courtney, you want to take it from here, or I can finish it out, or you want to take it from?
I think what staff is recommending is, since we did come under budget of $136,000, we're recommending to use some of that to transfer, to basically make the Stormwater Utility whole and go ahead, and that way, we're able to do projects. And, you know, we increased our utility fee, so we really need to get some of these projects done. So we, instead of having a deficit, we would rather transfer money from general fund and go ahead and start on those stormwater projects. The second thing we'd like to do is go ahead and hire the public works position at mid-year, which would be half the year at $25,000. Public Works is getting ready to experience a retirement soon, and they really need that position. And that way, while we have, we will still be adding $60,000 more dollars to the reserves than we had originally budgeted, and we're able to make our Stormwater Utility whole and hire a public works position.
Thank you. Who's getting ready to retire?
Luban?
Courtney, and the $50,000 minus is basic. The way I think you said to me is, we had 100, basically 100,000, 120,000 for the maintenance that comes out of Public Works is paying for.
works is paying for that service, which really should be coming out of the stormwater, correct?
Correct.
And it's to balance that out where the stormwater didn't have the funds before.
That's correct.
Other questions for staff from counsel?
I, I just want to make a comment that this is the first time we've probably ever had this much of a detailed report. Anytime we've had something like this at year-end or any kind of a budget issue. And I just want to thank you for putting this together because it really spells out, and it makes it a lot easier for the people that are sitting in the audience to understand, you know, what's going on in the city's finances. So I think this is, this is really wonderful. Do we need a motion to do these, or?
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, we, it's a first reading, so.
It's the first reading, so that's part of, these, these recommendations are part of this.
Oh, I would go ahead and do the first reading, and then we'll separate the direction for the rest.
No, that's all I have for comments, so.
Okay.
The only thing I want to say, Andy, is nice job on the general fund balance. That was really good to see, how that's all come together. I mean, considering where we were, oh my gosh. I mean, it's, it's, you guys have turned that around really well. Thank you.
And we do have a new, like, the comptroller position that took over, and Ann's position, basically, and she's done a lot of work on this. She couldn't be here to see anything. I'd introduce you to her. Pretty, pretty smart and well with, and with the program. So she's helped a lot with this budget amendment, and things are going a lot smoother. And I think we'll be able to stay on top of some of these issues moving forward, you know, even the stormwater. Even though that was the first several months while we were here, we, we found that. But moving forward, we hopefully be able to avoid all those, all those things.
Please pass along our thanks to.
I will do it.
And I also just wanted to congratulate the department heads. We meet every week, and we talk about our budgets and the status of those, and, and they work real hard to stay under. And I think you see the fire department savings. That was the savings in the maintenance of the fire truck, because they have a new one. So some of those decisions council made, you know, affects the, our budgets in the long-term and giving, and providing those savings.
Correct. Any further comments from counsel?
Yeah, once again, great job from the staff. We appreciate it. Andy, excellent job on the budget. And, and these reports are really easy to understand, clearly done. We appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, open up for public comment on this agenda item.
No, we don't, no.
Good evening, counsel. Ron Dragoannis, residents, Satellite Beach. This presentation here, is this in the agenda packet, this presentation?
No.
For the residents? All righty then. Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to let the community know, we will never put presentations on the web before we give the presentation. So we will have it uploaded afterwards, but we like to give the presentation first so people can hear our discussion on YouTube if they want to go to that, to hear that. So we will have the presentation uploaded on the web afterwards, and we do that. But we don't do that prior to.
Thank you.
Floor's still open for public comment?
No.
Can I ask a question?
I'll let you ask the question.
You don't want?
Please, thank you. Public comment's still open?
Dave Fine-Cision, having sat through many, many budget meetings since I've lived in Satellite Beach, I can say that this is one of the best and easier-to-understand budgets that I've seen. I gave my full conference to our city manager and the assistant city manager when they were hired, and I guess my confidence was well-placed. And I thank them, and I thank this council.
Thank you very much. Public comment portion still open. Here are none. Close that portion, bring it back to counsel for a motion.
Do we, you need a motion to approve ordinance number 10?
I thought you did that, didn't you?
Do we have a motion? We did, and then, Councilman Montanaro? Yes, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, I, oh, we did. Any further discussion from counsel? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Gervais?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Staff, Andy, Courtney, thank you very, very much. Very well-presented.
Do we need a motion?
She's going to do that. That's going to be next. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 12, items for next regular council meeting. If we have a 6:45 meeting to...
We need, we need, Frank, we do need to make these motions.
She said she's going to do that.
No, we would need a motion for the...
To do it.
Based on our recommendations, so.
Yeah, we need motions for the reasons.
All right, so I'll make a, I'll make a motion to amend the 1314 budget.
Oh, no, 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 no. We'll, we'll be, we'll be coming back at mid-year with that.
Oh, okay. I thought you needed these, no, no. What do you need as far as motions?
We would need you to allow us at mid-year to budget the, I guess you could call it a rollover, the rollover?
Yes.
The rollover of, shown here, of $50,000 to the stormwater utility?
That's what I was getting ready to do.
Okay. And then $25,000 for the public works position.
Right, that's what I was getting ready to do.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we transfer the $50,000 from the general fund to the stormwater fund and provide the, the monies to hire the public work service worker position.
Second. Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Gott. Further discussion from counsel? Here are none, open up for public comment on that motion. Here are none, back to counsel, Lenore?
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Goddard?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes. Motion passes. Now we'll move on to Agenda Item 12, which is items for the next regular meeting. And you'd please look at the packet, and if there's any other additional items that need to go on it for the meeting, please let me know. Or, Courtney?
And I, I'd like to add another meeting.
Okay.
For the handbook workshop.
Okay.
I'm proposing December the 2nd. That's been cleared with the staff. That date works for them.
Okay. And that's a Tuesday, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
At 7:00?
7:00. How's that looking, everybody?
I got a question. Let me get through.
Look, okay.
Is that okay? Is, are we on with that?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
And it's not traditional? I mean, it's, it varies year to year whether we do this or not. Are we looking at having one meeting or two in December? I mean, sometimes it's one, sometimes it's two. I don't care. I just know we're going to have to hit that.
We were actually considering, we weren't actually considering canceling a meeting because it was, there is no interference with Christmas this year.
It's early.
Okay, I've done, I just wanted to bring it up.
Unless, you know, we always like days off. And then even January, you know, your first meeting's on the 7th, so.
On the agenda items for next, we have a 6:45, which is basically approving the results at a November.
Yes.
Fourth election. That will be at 6:45, and the regular meeting will start at 7:00.
Just a technical thing, do we actually approve the results or just accept the results?
I think we accept.
I believe you're, you're accepting and approving because it's a resolution, so. Right? That's what it says on this.
You can go back and look at what the other resolution board before.
That's what goes with the other resolution.
Yeah.
I think all we do correctly is just accept them patently. Not anything for us to approve.
Jim, will you look into that, make sure we have that?
Approve the resolution, accepting the results.
Okay. Thank you. Look over the November 19th regular meeting, starting at 7:00. And if there's anything else has to be added, please see city manager and myself. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, appointments to boards.
Mayor, we don't have any applicants at the time.
And I have a question.
We have a reappointment, do we not? Okay.
Yeah, I have a question. This is showing that there is one regular member position vacant on the Board of Adjustment, and, you know, we...
It should have been an alternate, that was a, an error.
What?
It's an error, it's supposed to be an alternate.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So it's an alternate side?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we need to reappoint Suzanne?
Yes, we need a motion.
Okay, I'll move to reappoint Suzanne McLendon as an alternate member of the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any discussion? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Gervais?
Yes.
Mayor Tino?
Yes, motion carries. Courtney, the next beach caster, do we save any space in it to try to get people to sign up for board positions?
No, I didn't put that in the beach caster this coming round, but we can do it the next one.
Okay.
But I did, I started putting it on Facebook, too.
I saw that post, so, okay.
I got some good responses, so hopefully we're, you know, we'll get some applicants. And then I was going to go on a, on a knocking door phone call spree. So if anybody has any ideas of someone who would be a good board member, give me, give me the name, and I'll be glad to contact them.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to 14, adoption of minutes for October 15th, 2014, regular meeting.
Do we have to adopt the minutes that's submitted?
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Gott, second by Councilman Montanaro. Any questions on the minutes? Here are none, Lenore?
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Montanaro?
Yes.
Councilman Brimer?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Any further business before counsel? Just to remind counsel, that's a 6:45, start at the next, on the 19th. And if any other business you need to, please see Courtney on. Okay, here are no further business. Meeting's adjourned.